We invite all who care to join us in a recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by an hymn of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to deliver us from evil. Your life is the kingdom, and the power is the glory forever. Amen.
It is now seven o'clock. As I stated, councilman, it's called a board. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seated, please. A little call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Cutlet, here. Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin, here.
For the record, Mr. Robb is in surgery recovery, not present, but in the process of recovery, surgery. I now entertain the motion, the defense of reading the Journal on November the fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Ooh, say.
And a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin, to the defense of the reading of the Journal from November the fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
And motion passes. Now come to that for public comment. If anyone has a comment to make to the public, we'd like you to come to the table, state your name and address, and make your comment to council. There are going to seem none. We'll go forward then to reports from standing special committees. Finance, personal committee met, and I think standing this evening for councilman Mark will be councilman McLaughlin with the report.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance committee, we did meet a few days ago, earlier in the week, last Thursday. Start on page six, if you have it on the transcript. The income tax collections per October, four hundred and one thousand plus, which brings us to a total for two thousand twenty-four of four million seven hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and thirty. Going back to page two. Income tax, two thousand twenty-four individuals, one million, thirty-nine thousand. Business, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and withholding, three million, three hundred and eighteen thousand. We are up eleven point two five percent for the year because of the change in the tax rate from the one point five to one point seven five because of the fire levy. So, page one. Looking at the funds, utility funds are on the black. The Caplin Street funds are close to a zero balance as well. In November, we pay an annual insurance bill. We have a list of payroll adjustments coming, so we expect our operating funds to break even. Let's see. Page three, we'll skip. Page four. So, well, the U.S. Bank is down to one million. It's in a CD that matures in January, and right now our total investment checking is at fifteen million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and maybe seven cents. And then finally, on page five, the Suda Rosh fund is up over thirty-two thousand for the year. That is all I have, Mayor.
Two.
Oh, wait, wait.
Personnel.
Personnel. Two items. The city's recent tenant agreement on a new three-year contract with IUOE Unit A, and we are also continuing contract provisions with IUOE Unit B and our Fire Fighters Union. That is all now.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. McLaughlin in his report? Mr. Martin?
Move that combined financial statement and cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, we receive, place on file, and posted to the city website. Second.
A motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, we receive, place on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Motion passes. I do, councilman McLaughlin. The utilities and streets committee, I'll form McLaughlin again. Oh, councilman Cutler, sorry.
Councilman, we thought the meeting was in progress, couldn't make it, so I'll handle those things.
That's right.
Utilities and streets committee meeting, not on November fifteenth, and it was a pretty short meeting, there was not much on here, but important nevertheless. So, probably the big thing, you know, water service line inventory reporting. We've made it past phase one and added the inventory to the Ohio EPA, completed at ten fifteen. And we've sent out letters, in fact, that just happened on, that's phase three of it, and they're sent out on Friday, the fifteenth, which is a delay. So, I would imagine most of the folks, they need to report their service lines, they've got letters, so that's important. If they haven't done that, call down to the utility office and let them know what those lines are. If they don't know, then they have to assume that they're lit. So, if they need, if they can't figure it out, they're unable to do that, they can always call down to the utility office, and the utility office can send somebody out there to help them do that. So, next thing on the list is the reservoir levels. Good news is that land operators have been able to pump water into reservoir number three. We had enough rain to bring up the rivers enough, so they were able to pump water out of the rivers and into the reservoir, which is good. So, they've actually been able to see some reservoir levels starting to rise in three, which is a good thing. Operators are carefully monitoring the water levels at both reservoirs, and we are still asking residents to be conservative with their water uses until further notice. And the last thing on the list is the Ohio EPA has announced grant opportunities that are available from November fourth through December twentieth. The public water systems can apply for following grants, emergency generator grant, source water protective strategies grant, well bathing grant, water audit, water loss control program grant. The water plant superintendent is seeking a grant for emergency generator for reservoir three pumping station, loss of electricity of pumping in the station interrupts flow of water to the treatment plants. It would be a great thing if they could, they could secure a grant for the backup generator to make sure that we don't lose the water. And the current status of that is they're filling out the application, and legislation is being prepared for the first or second council meeting. And that's all now.
All right. Thank you, councilman Cutlet. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Cutlet in regard to his report? We'll move forward then, actually, safety committee, Mayor, so we want to make sure councilman Roberts had the opportunity to report the safety committee meeting.
Thank you very much, sir. We met on November sixth, and fire news, and fire news. We know that our fire contracts are good until, for the share and township, until two thousand twenty-seven and two thousand twenty-eight, the Jackson county, or townships. EMS and fire, calling the fire started on shift one, contract negotiations were continuing. The next day, actually, after the meeting, old rescue brought fourteen thousand two hundred dollars, and it was picked up the, picked up the day after, or the day before our meeting, and that money will go into the fire equipment fund. Let's see, the next year he wants to perform upgrade on the MARS radio, they need to perform an upgrade on the MARS radios, and that needs to be done by July first. And I will talk about this later on, we'll set date for volunteer firefighter dependent fund, and we'll also talk about the volunteer peace officer dependent fund when that comes up. We're still waiting on arrival of the new monitors, and the Eagles Club and Halls Club have donated the money for those. Health Department, Police Department have anything, anything to talk about, so. But in Health Department news, I want to thank the voters for passing the levy, the health levy. Sixteen birth certificates were taken, twenty-six death certificates, COVID cases were down, STDs were down, we have no new animal bites, one trash complaint, and Health Department has a new Facebook page and a new fax number. The new fax number is five six seven two seven five zero four four zero. And that is my report.
Thank you, councilman Roberts. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Robertson in regard to his report? Mr. Martin?
Zero four four zero. Zero four four zero.
Very good. Thank you. The traffic commission met, and councilman Cutler was a part of that commission, did you have a report tonight, sir?
Yes. So, the traffic commission, the main thing that we talked about during that was this traffic impact studies and access management policy that we got from TMS engineers. There's a lot to that, I'm obviously not going to go over all that in the council meeting, but that, those discussions are still ongoing. There's a few things that the gentleman will look into as far as that goes, and we'll be meeting again to talk about that more. I would imagine once that's done, it'll probably end up in planning commission's hands, and from there we may, you know, we'll probably have to go over the right changes if they want to make to it, and then it'll probably end up under the council for consideration and some of that. Beyond that, we did talk about these signs. We've been, we moved a thirty-five mile an hour sign on State Street. There was a thirty-five mile an hour sign, and then another thirty-five mile an hour sign, kind of right after that, and it was a little bit confusing because we got into a, an area where you had to slow down during restricted hours and school hours. So, we just wanted to make it less confusing and remove that sign, especially since it's so close to the other one. Another change was the school zone sign on Smiley. It just says during restricted hours, and we actually want to change that sign, put the actual hallways on it, to, you know, remove confusion before the visitors there. The other signs, there's still signs up that say turn here for Glenn's in Central Ohio Glass. Obviously, Central Ohio Glass is since moved, and I think those signs were put up over the Smiley Bridge, so project, and it was out of commission, and that's back in operation, so there's no need to have those signs anymore. And that's about it.
Thank you, councilman Cutler, moving forward. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Robertson in regard to that report? Appreciate that, thank you. We'll move forward to reports of city officials. The mayor's report. Since our last council meeting, I have been occupied with typical mayoral duties and device. A few highlights from that time period, for the past couple of weeks, as has been mentioned, I participated with others in contract negotiation sessions with union representatives from the IUOE unit, eighteen S Unit A, IUOE eighteen S Unit B, and the IAFF, which are firefighters. And again, happy to report that we have reached a tentative agreement on the three-year contract with the International Union of Operators and Engineers, eighteen S Unit A. Last week, Ms. Griffin and I happily welcomed to town the group of Russian County leadership on limited participants. They were here to get a firsthand look at the revitalization results of our downtown district and to learn of the ingredients of success in Shelby. And I too want to express, on behalf of the city, your appreciation to the voters for passing both the health levy and the park levy. I was on the ballot here in November. I certainly appreciate their continued support and faith they put into, into these entities, both services, health and parks, very integral part of our city, so I want to thank our voters for the positive results, and we'll continue to, see to be good stewards of their funds. And that's my report. Any questions or comments in regard to my report? All right, hearing that, we'll move forward then. Mr. Crum, you follow me?
Thank you. We are quickly getting to the year-end work to get everything closed up for the year. We finish up projects, we have, I don't know, about a month left of opening POs before we, okay, let's cut it off and start closing some for the year. We have to go through our, certain process to review sort of our fixed assets everywhere, because everything's inventoried, we get all the permit heads, and make sure everything still exists, if we dispose of something or move from that list. As well as, we have lots of appropriations, adjustments to make sure we stay in balance. There's a couple pieces of legislation tonight that I'd be grateful if council could see it fit to pass those. And next council meeting, I'll have the two thousand twenty-five temporary budget, or temporary appropriations for you guys, so that way we spend a little bit of money on things like payroll and such at the beginning of the year. The staff really likes that. And audit news, the Health Department audit is finished, I'll have a copy of that from you guys next week, or next council meeting. And probably by then, if, unless something goes terribly awry, we'll have the overall audit for you as well, so we'll give those released, a little while into the next year, which the state auditor is planning on subcontracting out our audit next year, that's not unusual. We've actually had the state do it directly for longer than, than is typical, really. They like to split it up, that night, our auditors, to look at it, it's not the same people every time. So, that will be a change for two thousand, the two thousand twenty-four audit, which will go next spring. That's it, we'll have it for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Crum. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? Move forward then to Mr. Eisner, law director.
Thank you, Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Move to Mr. Joe Geis, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have two public hearings this evening, one at six thirty for ordinance twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four, one at six forty-five for ordinance twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. There were no comments or questions to either one of those. Some really good news, we did find out we got approved for our Health Works Commission project application for state consolidated, pending one final vote at the District Sixteen meeting, but shouldn't be any problem, that's more just a formality at that point, so that'll be able to be started after July one of next year. And still working on information, trying to get information on the Clark Avenue bricks. Had a good conversation with Mount Burns Engineer and the things they do. He hooked me up with a contractor, which I've been playing fling tag with, I can't, so I'm still trying to get that, so I'll get that information too when I get it, so that's all I have.
Mr. Geis, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? All right, hearing that, seeing none. Move forward then to new business. Any new business that you brought before council this evening? Mr. Box?
This is the season that we need to talk about our volunteer firefighter dependent fund board and our volunteer peace officer dependent fund board. We have to have two members of council on that board, and this is a board where we need once for a, for a structural meeting, and then I hope to goodness that we never have to meet again, because if we have to meet again, that means something tragic is happening with one of our volunteer firefighters. So, I would like to, at this time, nominate Eric Cutlet to be on that, I guess I, I motion to nominate Eric Cutlet on that board.
Yeah. Is there a second?
A second.
Nominations don't give a second. All right.
I don't need a second.
Nominations don't give a second.
Two deserve all that? Who do you mean, two? Who can take a vote on those, though? Who can take a vote on them?
We do, yeah, yeah. Who votes separately, and who gives what? Okay. Well, I'm, 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 I'm.
This is for volunteer firefighter dependent fund?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts? Councilman Roberts and councilman Cutler?
Put it in quick.
Yes, sir.
So, are the, are the terms not for the full term of council?
Yeah.
They're a year term?
One year.
Yes, we do, every, every year we do those. We have done those every year since I've been on, so.
That's what I remember.
Yeah.
So, this would be for the term of two thousand twenty. For the term two thousand twenty-five?
Yes.
All right, any discussion on those nominations?
Is this just for the fire dependent board or for?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call on the nominations of Mr. Cutlet, Mr. Roberts.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Motion passes. Mr. Cutlet, Mr. Roberts will serve on the volunteer firefighter dependence fund board, which is Roberts.
And I will nominate councilman Cutlet to, to be a member of the volunteer peace officer dependent fund board. And nominate councilman Roberts to be on separate.
We have the nominations for the volunteer peace officers dependent fund board, Mr. Cutlet and Mr. Roberts. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Passes, and so will, Mr. Cutlet and Mr. Roberts will serve the term two thousand twenty-five with peace officer volunteer dependent, peace officer dependent fund board. That's an offer. All right, thank you for taking care of that. And the other new business. Unfinished business, I, I do want to bring on the unfinished business to the old fire station. So, planning for the old fire station is to market the building and property through the Shelby Community Improvement Corporation. It's been a format that has been successful in selling properties in the past in ways advantageous to all parties involved. The city administration, in cooperation with this council, will do its best to see that the building and property is placed under qualified and responsible ownership. Details of this transaction and appropriate legislation will be brought to council in the near future. I'm requesting that the clerk of council keep this item on the agenda under unfinished business until the matter is concluded. Any questions on that? Feel free to give me a phone call anytime, or drop me off if you have some questions. That's, that's the direction I am in. And Mr. Roberts?
So, do we still have, since this is, since you've made this decision, are we still going to have our next public works meeting at that fire station?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, any other unfinished business? If not, let's get into legislation.
Orders number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four, in Act section twelve ninety-six point eighteen, minimal law width requirement on the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Second. You have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading of ordinance number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Order number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four passes this third reading.
Does it passage the ordinance?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of the ordinance. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Order number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four passes.
Orders number twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, amending Title Four subdivision regulations on the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
I have a reading.
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading of ordinance number twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Order number twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four passes.
Orders number twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-four, amending section two seventy-six point oh four food service, retail food establishment license fees, with chapter two seventy-six, division of health, the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Second.
Second. You have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin for the second reading of ordinance number twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Order number twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four passes. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Roberts. Just wanted to express my disagreement again with the plan of view application fees. Certainly, we'd like to see those removed before final passage.
Mr. Roberts?
I, I looked at a little bit of this app since, since we talked about this last, and I think, I think the thought was the last time that these are just part of, part of the job, and in discussions, I don't think that that's the case. Some of these things, especially with the new building going on out on the, the new gas station out there, it's, it's way beyond what they would do on a normal day. These, these reports, application reviews have to be turned into the state, they're, and if the state's not happy with them, you know, they have to, they come back, and they're, they don't know that there's, that there's, if they, if there's trouble about that, that they, that they have to be turned into the state, the state has to agree with all that. It's certainly not, it's certainly not something that's, it's just, you know, you bring them in, and they are, it takes an eye, you know, and something that takes a lot of time, and I, I think that, with all due respect, I disagree with what councilman wrote, I think that that should, this should stay, that this fee should stay, it's a one-time thing when something is getting opened up.
Further discussion?
I think certainly that we're talking about large businesses like the, the gas station coming in, that certainly might make sense, but we're applying this across the board regardless of scope, and so I think that, you know, maybe there's a, a way that we can put language in here, if the project is over a certain amount, or is, is certainly more involved, and we can apply the fee to compensate for time, because obviously if you're putting in.
I I looked at a little bit to this app since since we talked about this last. And I think that I think the thought was the last time that these are just part of, part of the job. And in discussions, I don't think that that's the case. Some of these things, especially with the new building going on out on the new gas station out there, it's way beyond what they would do on a normal day. These these reports, application reviews have to be turned into the state. They're, and if the state's not happy with them, you know, they have to come back. And you know, I don't know that there's, that there's, that they, if there's trouble about that, that they have to be turned into the state. The state has to agree with all that. It's certainly not, it's certainly not something that's, it's just, you know, you bring them in and they are, it takes an eye of you. And it's something that takes a lot of time. And I think that with all due respect, I disagree with what council more. I think that that should stay, that this fee should stay. It's a one-time thing when something is getting opened up.
Further discussion, Mr. Martin?
I think certainly that we're talking about large businesses like the the gas station coming in. That certainly might make sense, but we're applying this across the board regardless of scope. And so I think that, you know, maybe there's a way that we can put language in here if the project is over a certain amount or is certainly more involved. Then we can apply the fee to compensate for time. Because obviously, if you're putting in a gas station like that, then you expect, you know, a hundred fifty dollars on that project is minimum. But that's not necessarily the case for every monopop shop or someone else's name plan review. So I think maybe there's a ability to differentiate, to, I think, kind of meet in the middle there.
Any further discussion? This is second reading. Roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Order number twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-four passes this second reading.
Ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four. Amending section two seventy-six point oh five body art approval fees of chapter two seventy-six division of health of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Move to the second reading.
You have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the second reading of ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Mr. Roberts?
The the last, the last reading, this was, this was set up as an emergency and we take take the emergency off of it. And I've since found out that these have to be, the notices have to be mailed out by the twenty fifth of November, which is next week. So if that happens, then these fees will not be able to be, will not be able to take effect this year. So I would like to move that the rules requiring a ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second.
And I would assume that the entire language, emergency language, declaring emergency is also in your, in your motion?
Yep.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. McLaughlin that the rule requiring the ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended and declared emergency. That is the motion on the floor for ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. This is the motion to suspend. Mr. Cubblet?
I guess I'm not really in favor of that. I think any of the, any time we're talking about keys, there needs to be three readings of a ordinance for the public to get that proper time for the comment. If this needed to be done by a certain date, it should have been brought to council ahead of time.
Further discussion? Mr. Martin?
I I agree in principle. I think that there is kind of a time crunch here, and I understand that. We're looking at essentially, if I'm understanding correctly, if we don't do this by emergency tonight, then none of this will go into effect beneficially until the following year or was it twenty twenty-six? Is that my correct understanding of what Mr. Roberts is saying?
Mr. Roberts?
I I, that's the way I understand it. And what we're talking about is is three, three establishments. The the fee will be up by twenty-five dollars per establishment. It's, you know, I mean, it's, it's not, you know, we're not going to be making a ton of money if it doesn't pass, but it's, I think every little bit counts. So, you know, every, every time that we pass something in emergency, you know, it's, it's a time crunch. You know, it's, it's, we could say that about every, every emergency that, that people should have more time to, to look at, but just, you know, in those situations, it's just sometimes not possible.
Any further discussion? This is on the motion to suspend and declare emergency. Roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
The motion failed because we did not get four votes. So we still have on the floor the motion for the second reading. Mr. Martin?
Well, I certainly on twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-four, sympathetic to the need for plan review application fees because the scope of the business could certainly be large. I just don't see that for body art or tattoo parlors that are generally small and generally are small businesses. And so specifically to this one, I like to make a motion to strike out number five and then reorder the number accordingly.
Is there a second to that motion to amend? There are no second. I have motion to amend. Pardon. Mr. Roberts?
If I could, maybe between now and the next meeting after reading, then we can have a conversation about a different number that can be, that we can amend to with the, with the health department and then we can bring something back for the reading.
Any further discussion, Mr. Martin?
I certainly hope so because eventually this is going to have to pass by emergency and my vote is going to be needed, so, yeah. Count to three all day, but eventually you're going to have to count to four and that's going to hope that certain other council members in attendance, the first meeting in December, which is at this point may or may not happen. So I'm saying that, you know, we can ignore my pleads, the last two council meetings of my objections, but eventually they're going to be heard.
Mr. Roberts?
I don't think that if we don't get the emergency tonight, since we're not going to get the emergency tonight, I don't necessarily ask for the emergency next time. We'll just lose the seventy-five dollars and we'll get what we get. And then next year, if we pass the third reading, then we'll get that seventy-five dollars for the next round, so.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Order number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four passes this second reading.
Ordinance number thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Amending section two seventy-six point oh seven public swimming pool license fees of chapter two seventy-six division of health of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Move to the second reading.
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the second reading of ordinance number thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Order number thirty-two thousand twenty-four passes this second reading.
Ordinance number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Amending chapter four fifty-two apartment generally of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
First question. Second.
You have a motion on Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Cubblet for the first reading of ordinance number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Order number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four passes this first reading.
Ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-four. Amending ordinance number five, two thousand twenty-four annual appropriations and declaring emergency.
Is the rule requiring the ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Martin that the rule requiring the ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
A motion to suspend passes. Will the arts be taken and passed?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Mr. Crum.
Thank you. Well, I I try to keep things in line with just transferring within the same funds, which is the next ordinance deals with. There were a few items that I needed to increase, one because funds were available and of course, we had some needs that that could be filled. Essentially, the first line transfer of higher income tax. Because the tax revenues come in a little better than I hoped during the year, we have some extra monies that should be allocated at that point, but we have to get it out of the income tax fund and into the fire income tax fund to do that. Actually, you'll probably see in December, I may have to do that for the other, the general and Justice Center and the other, and the streets funds as well. But I knew that I was going to have extra money in the two twenty fund that I needed to get to the two fifteen fund. So that's why I increased that line item. The two thirty-nine fund and the seven oh six fund, those are both funds that had unappropriated balances that we have used as score if council sees fit. And then the seven oh three fund, that's the fire equipment fund. Since we received some funds from the sale of the ambulance, Chief Thompson would like to use those monies to purchase some new equipment. So he asked that I increase the appropriate balance there. So that is pretty much the change that this will enact.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Order number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-four passes.
Order number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Transferring appropriations for the year two thousand twenty-four and declaring an emergency.
Will the rule requiring the ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts that the ordinance, I'm sorry, that the rule requiring the ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
A motion to suspend passes.
Will the ordinance be taken and passed?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Mr. Crum.
This is purely housekeeping because I'm trying to balance things as we get to the end of the year. I was able to, I'm looking, okay, where am I going to be short? And I was able to find other lines in each of the same funds so I didn't have to do any additional appropriations. It's just they exceeded the amount that council allows me to do without council approval. So this is just to switch things around between line items so that we can get everything from the issue.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Order number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-four passes.
Thanks, guys.
Resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Authorizing the mayor as director of public safety of the city of Shelby to apply for funding from the National Environmental Health Association for participating in voluntary national retail food regulatory program standards, program standards and declaring an emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Cubblet for the passage of ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Mr. Cubblet?
So if I was looking at this for, if this has to do with training? Is that for?
It's given.
So it's not a training grant. It's basically, that's part of it. It's like one small part of it, but it's basically to make sure that our food program is meeting national standards, our food safety program. So it's kind of like the public health accreditation for, the accreditation that we have for our entire health department. This one just applies to the food program and this organization does provide funding for doing that.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty-four passes. To miscellaneous businesses, are any miscellaneous businesses to be brought before council? Roll call.
Will we go into executive session with following purpose, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees, determining compensation or other terms and conditions that they're employed?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Cubblet that we go into executive session for the reasons so read. And, yes, sir.
And, Mayor, if this happens to pass, assuming that you, Mr. Hinsman, and Mr. Crum should come in.
Thank you.
Not wrong. We're getting better.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Cubblet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Motion passes, council was in this, that is, seven forty-five.
Shouldn't make a call.